Our agenda today is public comment on issues that are on today's agenda. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the council on any matter on the agenda? Seeing none, we will proceed. We do have a docket for approval today and our dutiful council clerk has made me aware of the fact that item eighteen does require us to determine whether we wish to have a public hearing. So I call that issue to your attention and the floor is open for a motion to approve the docket. Councilmember Blues.
Mayor, I've had several requests for a public meeting on eighteen, on the zone change for 2040 Sandersville Road, so I'd like to place that on the docket for a public hearing at 6:00 PM, June 10th.
How about if we accept that as a motion to approve the docket with item eighteen scheduled for a public hearing on six o'clock on June 10th, did you say?
I accept your voting.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Blubbins has seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote those in favor of approving the docket with a hearing on item number eighteen on June 10th at 6:00 PM. Please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. We have a summary for approval this afternoon. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Councilmember Lane has seconded. Councilmember DeCamp's motion to approve the summary. Any discussion? I see none. Those in favor of approving the summary, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. And we're now down to budget amendments.
I move approval of the budget amendments.
Have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve the budget amendments. Seconded by Councilmember Ellinger. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving the budget amendments, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. The items of new business are next. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
A motion from Councilmember DeCamp and a second by Councilmember Myers to approve the items of new business. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Beard.
I would like to move at this time to place a resolution on the docket for Thursday, April 28th, 2008, authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with the Board of Education of Fayette County, Kentucky, for Meadow Brook Golf Course for a period ending November 15th, the cost of $1.
Let me check with the parliamentarian. Is that motion in order at this time?
No, Mayor, that is out of order during new business, but can be done during council report or during the doctity.
We'll take it up during council report then. Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just on your way down, if you would, just give us an update of where we stand and about what's going on with the EOC out here, or the PSOC, I guess it is.
PSOC, as it's called now, formerly known as the EOC, formerly known as two or three other things probably. We currently, as you probably know, have acquired the site for it in Culture and Research Park. We acquired that last fall from UK. It's about a seven and three-quarter acre site. We have hired an architect firm, or an architect team, Omni Architects locally here in Lexington, and HSMM out of Virginia, which is a national architect firm with expertise in emergency operations centers as well as 911 call centers. We also have selected, and a contract should be coming to you, probably, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, to approve for a systems integrator, which will integrate all the technology within the building. We also anticipate, as I said in the memo, engaging a construction manager for the project due to the both compressed time schedule as well as the fast-track nature of the construction. We've been having programming meetings for the facility to get the, basically, facility requirements, site requirements, things of that nature. As a matter of fact, I think we have another meeting tomorrow with the design team on that. So it's currently underway. Construction, physical construction will probably start late summer. Planned final completion in the early part of 2010, occupancy in late 2000, occupancy and training in late 2009.
Thank you. I was just looking at the budgeted cost. When we first estimated this, were we at $22 million? Because I don't remember the cost being near that high.
I think the estimated cost has been in the $20 million range, yeah.
Hasn't been that high?
Yeah.
For some reason, I was thinking it was in the eighteen or fifteen.
And we have, well, of course, you know, since the project actually was conceived, it's been several years ago, and as construction costs go up, obviously, the estimate's going to go up.
What are we, what else is going to be out there now?
The combined division of E911, both police and fire, call taking and dispatching operations will be there. All emergency management will be there, both administrative offices as well as the emergency operations center itself. We're going to have some facilities, at least backup facilities, hopefully, for traffic engineering, traffic information network, the camera system. We plan to have computer facilities there for information technology for redundancy, which we currently don't have, and also Lexcall 311 is planned to be there.
Thank you. I appreciate the update.
You're welcome.
And the only other one I had, Mayor, was on 11, and I just want to, we're accepting donations for the senior interim program, and I just wanted to thank the two private corporations who have given their money, National City and Eminem Sanitation, who have been big supporters of this program. And once again, they stepped up the plate for a nice private-public group that works well and keeps this program alive. And I want to thank them publicly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any, Councilmembers, Timman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few. Item F, is Charlie Bowlen here? Yes, thought I saw you come in. Have a question. This is dealing with our Lyric Theater, which obviously is proposed a large chunk of funding in this FYI 2009 budget, but just have a question on this agreement for services. Has a design for that center already been set, and this does not cover anything with design cost?
Let me be sure I understand your question correctly. This is not a part of the design cost. This is part of the, this is coming from existing funding that we have in the budget and is to perform the analysis that council requested us to do late last fall in order to have a good understanding of the programming of that facility, a five-year business plan, and a number of recommendations that will be required to move the project forward.
Okay, so this has zero to do with what it looks like, the structure, et cetera?
The schematic design and layout have already been determined, but we are not going to pursue the final design until we have this piece of work done, because this piece of work could have some bearing on the final nature of the design.
Okay, and that's where I was going, so you are going to incorporate this into the final design?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the budget for this agreement came from where?
It's the existing bond funds that are available that have been set aside in previous years toward the Lyric Theater, so it's not new money. It's money that's been sitting there for this purpose.
And do you know how much is left in that previous, or the first original bonds? I know we're being asked to approve another bond.
It's a, well, the bond for construction would be coming in the next fiscal year, request for that. Within this current budget, which I think over the past, up to 1.25 million, had been set aside, there's still 300 to 400,000. I could give you an exact number if you want.
I just want to ballpark.
But that's after, that's in acquiring the facility and adjacent property. The, that includes the design cost, the actual design contract, and several other things that were related to actually acquiring the property through the eminent domain proceeding.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. And then on item P, I know, I thought I saw some folks from engineering here that could talk about item P. Is anyone from sanitary sewers here that can speak on that one? Now I see Commissioner Kelly. Well, I do see Charlie Martin. Charlie, I just, my big question is, is this the last easement? Do we know that yet? Because we had these come through a couple of weeks ago, and this seems to be a lone straggler out there.
I do not know whether this is the last one or not. I will check on this. As you know, this is a sanitary sewer project that's handled through engineering, but I'll make sure that you are ending it in answer by the end of the week.
Please, because we've had several people call, and I know there's been a couple of delays due to easements. I want to make sure our delays are ending here soon. I think this is the last one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then last but not least, number R. Just want to clarify exactly what's happening here. I think we've had a couple of these type of situations come through council here previously. Is Commissioner Coe available, or Joe Kelly can speak on this one? Or Paula? I see you're standing up. Anyone that wants to come up? Can you explain to us exactly what's happening in R for the 1.486 million?
Okay, what this is, is a subordination agreement where we originally had, when we built the facility, they had two mortgages, and we were second. When they transferred the property to their LLC, they refinanced their first, which mean we automatically moved to first position. And what this subordination does is it allows them to have their new first, new mortgage company be first and us be second.
Okay, so this is no new money, no bond, no financial impact on LFUCG at all?
No, no.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Blubbins.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this is for you or Commissioner Helm. I'm looking at item K, which has to do with the day treatment center. My question is generally this. I know there's some proposed changes to that program as a part of your proposed budget, and I want to understand how this particular item fits in with the vision, with your vision for next year. I'm not sure if that's you or Commissioner Helm. I just want, I need the context for what we're doing here and how that's going to fit in next year, assuming that we were to approve the proposed changes.
The submittal of the application is something that would need to occur whether we continue operating the program or whether we agree and approve, or you agree and approve, having Fayette County to operate the program. Submitting the application is just an annual requirement, and that has been done.
So we will go get the funding, and if we continue with the proposal, we would then send this funding to the public school system to fund the program?
That is correct. Last Monday, a week ago Monday, representatives of Fayette County, along with myself, went to Frankfurt to talk with DJJ, who is the provider of the treatment dollars, and we asked that very same question. If the program is transferred to another entity, will the funds be transferred as well? And they have indicated to us that that is correct. Now, we have also been told that the funding amount is probably going to be reduced and perhaps significantly, but we will not know that for at least probably another month.
Oh, as a part of their budget process?
That is correct.
I'm with you now.
Apparently, the funding for this program is a Medicaid issue, and Congress has decided that Medicaid funding for programs of this nature are going to be reduced with the intent in the future to eliminate them altogether.
And have you begun negotiations with the school system locally to transfer talks of any kind?
We have just started talking about, we provided them with some information. In fact, just yesterday, I think, through the efforts of someone, information about where the students live so that Fayette County could begin to see where they're, what the transportation issue would look like. And so we have provided them with budget information, and we have another meeting set up for Thursday. We're talking daily, almost.
Okay.
Just sharing information.
All right, thank you. That's all I needed. Thanks, Mayor.
Any further discussion of the items of new business?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilmember Stevens.
I presume that if the day treatment center leaves, would leave its present location, it'd be relocated someplace else in Lexington if it's transferred to the school system?
It's probably too early to make that judgment just yet. In some preliminary conversations with Superintendent Silverman, they expressed some interest in considering the possibility of keeping it in its present location, and so all of that is subject to discussion right now, but there's not been any definitive proposal with regard to the location yet.
But we'll know before we vote on the budget.
That's our goal, yes. That's our goal, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Those see no further discussion, those in favor of approving the items of new business, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion carries. In addition to serving as our computer technician, our council clerk has advised me correctly that we need to designate the June 10th meeting as a special meeting of the council, and so a motion would be in order to designate the June 10th meeting as a special meeting of the council for purposes of sending out notice.
Thank you, Mayor. So moved.
I have a motion and second. A motion by Councilmember Blues and a second by Councilmember Blubbins. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Oppose no, motion carries. That now brings us down to the presentations. Councilmember Gordon is not present today, but I believe Councilmember Blues has the planning committee report.
Thank you, Mayor. The planning committee last week took up two topics. The streetscape study now underway. Clete Benkin of Kinselman Klein and Gosman presented the main report on the progress and status of the study. Council members had various questions about the public relations campaign, about whether council should be involved before or only at the point of its coming up for adoption, whether sidewalk café standards were being considered as part of the plan, placement of bus stops, shelters, news rack issues, lane conversions to two-way streets. All of these are elaborated in the summary. The final draft of the study is going to be due in May, and Chairwoman Gordon invited the consultants to return to the committee at a future date to show changes in the plan going forward. Second subject was the Newtown pipe extension update. Andy Grunwald, project engineer, reported that the wet weather, winter and spring, have considerably delayed the preparation of the ground for the temporary housing, which will probably not be ready until mid-June, maybe later than that. Meanwhile, we still await transportation cabinet authorization to purchase right-of-way as needed from West Main to Versailles to go forward with the road project. No motions came out of the, out of the planning committee meeting, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Councilmember Blues about the planning committee report? I see none, so we'll move along. I'll turn the microphone over to Councilmember James.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy Earth Day to everyone. I don't know if everybody's aware, but today is Earth Day, and I take the pleasure of serving on LFUCG's tree board, and that's kind of how I honor the earth every day, is by caring about trees and working with this board, and I've really enjoyed my time on the board. This time, I'd like to introduce Tony Barrett, who is the chair of our tree board, and he's here to introduce someone who will, has a special presentation for us. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Andrea. Mayor Newberry, Vice Mayor Gray, and members of the council, here on behalf of the tree board, wearing the hat today as their chair of the tree board, and as Andrea indicated, it's Earth Day, and what a great day it is to be Earth Day, and a great opportunity for us to be here today for this opportunity. The, it's been a very good year for the tree board. We've just last week hosted a, the third annual state conference on, for tree boards under the direction of Judy Worth, our, one of our members, and the topic was Trees Pay Us Back: The Economic and Other Benefits of Trees. We had national and local speakers and panelists, and it was a very successful conference. We also recently received a grant from the Lexington Council of Garden Clubs to help us with our duties of education and promotion of the urban forest. And I would like to recognize our urban forester, Tim Query, and his staff, Rob Allen, Cortland Secord, and John Saylor. Some of them are here, if they could stand, for their hard work[1188.33][1188.33][applause] and their dedication in managing our urban forest. And also, I'd like to recognize Councilman Andrea James for her work. She's a real inspiration to our board with her dedication, hard work, and guidance, and I thank her.[1212.56][1212.56][applause] We have a few other members of the tree board here, if they could stand and be recognized. Jim Redman, Judy Worth, Yvette Hurt, Keith Lavine, and Peter Barber. Now, I'd like to introduce and ask to come forward Ms. Leah McSwards, Director of the Kentucky Division of Forestry. She has a presentation to present to us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. This is one of the fun parts of my job, to go out into communities and recognize those communities for their hard work in the protection and preservation and health of our trees. And Lexington, Fayette County, is a leader in the state in its urban forestry program in the way that you appreciate the fact that your urban trees, street trees, urban forests, parks, and green space provide that water quality protection, air quality protection, and that aesthetic beauty that your citizens have come to enjoy and appreciate. And on behalf of the National Arbor Day Foundation and the National Association of State Foresters, I'm here to present to the city of Lexington its 20th year as a Tree City USA, and Lexington, Fayette County, is the oldest Tree City USA in the state of Kentucky, so this is quite an honor for your community, Mayor. And I brought with me Deputy Secretary Hank List, a Lexington native, to do the actual presenting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's my pleasure as a resident of Fayette County to have the opportunity to present support to you and to all of you for your efforts. Councilmember James, thank you very much for this very important support for these types of programs. It makes our community that much better, and obviously, we continue to rise as one of the best places to live because of efforts like this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.[1362.12][1362.12][applause]
You can get up here. You'll stand up there with the flag. When you come into the city of Lexington, you see the signs that designate Lexington and Fayette County a Tree City USA. You now have a new flag to fly that designates that this is your 20th year as a Tree City, and I hope you will fly it proudly.[1388.12][1388.12][applause]
Let me, on behalf of urban county government, say to Secretary List, Ms. McSward, we appreciate very much you taking the time to be here today. It has taken the work of many people over a long period of time for us to maintain this commitment to our urban forest, and I'm just very happy that those who have preceded me have done the job well, and it's put us in a position now where we can get number 20 here.
Next item we have is a presentation, and Councilmember Lane has arranged this today. If you'd like to say a word of introduction, Councilmember Lane, we'll turn the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. In my regular life, I'm involved in publishing business and economic news, and a recent report that was produced by the Center for Business and Economic Research at the Gattin College of Business and Economics at the University of Kentucky came through my office. The executive director of that center is Dr. Ken Trosky, and I was so impressed with the report that I asked him to provide an overview of the information there to our council today, and I appreciate your coming in. Thank you for being here.
And thank you for inviting me, both Mayor Newberry and Vice Mayor Gray and council members. I'm glad to have the opportunity to come and/or that we found a subject that you're interested in hearing about from me. And so I want to tell you a little bit about some work I have done recently for the Cabinet for Economic Development, looking at economic growth in Kentucky, and in particular, why economic growth in Kentucky has been slower than growth in some of our southern neighbors. And I think it'll have some information that may be useful for you in thinking about economic development in Lexington as well. So to sort of set the stage a little bit, from, I'm sure many of you are aware, between 1939 and the present, Kentucky has consistently been one of the poorest states in the country. And on top of this already low level of income, Kentucky more recently has experienced fairly slow growth in output in recent areas. So low income combined with low growth over the last few years. This stands sort of in stark contrast to some of our southern neighbors, notably Tennessee, North Carolina, and Georgia, and even Alabama, who've experienced more rapid economic development in the recent years. This sort of led the Cabinet for Economic Development to commission me to do a study for them to try to understand this. Their cabinet is definitely interested in understanding the best ways to go about doing economic development and understanding some of the techniques that they've used, and thinking about alternative ways to do economic development. And so as part of this report, I basically examined whether there are identifiable factors that can explain why Kentucky remains mired at the bottom of the income distribution, and things we might think about doing to change some of these factors. This is a fairly extensive report. It's available on my website if you are interested. I also, I sent to the council a fairly extensive presentation that I'm going to give an abbreviated version of, but if you're interested in any additional information, please feel free to contact me. I can certainly provide you with it. To start with, I think we want, I would like to show you some pictures looking at the growth of income in Kentucky to sort of set the stage a little bit. Throughout my analysis, I've been in Kentucky three years now, and I'm smart enough to know whenever I put Kentucky on a graph, I put it in blue, so you'll always see Kentucky in Kentucky blue. I'm going to compare Kentucky's growth to the states I've already mentioned, Alabama, which is going to be red, Georgia, which is green, North Carolina, which is going to be Carolina blue, and Tennessee, which is in orange. And you can see at the start of this period in 1969, the average level of Kentucky, income in Kentucky was low, but not outrageously different than many of our surrounding neighbors. By the end of the period under study, you can see that the, we have, can divide into a section of haves and have-nots. In Kentucky, certainly among the have-nots, we have income by the end of the period that's even below Alabama's, something I don't think we can be proud of, and income in particular is places like Georgia, North Carolina, and Tennessee, has caught up with average income in the rest of the country, which is presented in black in this figure. Another thing we did was we looked at income and divided it by rural and urban areas, and one thing that Lexington, I think, can be proud of is the fact that relative to the rest of the state, the urban areas in Kentucky have actually experienced fairly rapid growth over this period. So what this graph shows is the average income in urban areas in Kentucky relative to other urban areas in the country. And you can see that after starting out at about 85% of the income in other urban areas, urban areas in Kentucky now are about parity with other urban areas in the United States, suggesting that urban areas in Kentucky have grown fairly rapidly over this period, which would then lead you to the conclusion that most of our slow economic growth in Kentucky has primarily occurred in rural areas. And that's probably the main question, I think, that the cabinet and state government struggles with, is how to do economic growth in the rural areas. What I'm showing you here is average income in rural areas in these various states relative to income in rural areas in the rest of the country, and you can see relative to these other states, Kentucky ranks dead last. So we performed a statistical analysis to examine a number of factors which may account for, which we think accounts for economic growth. I've listed the factors up there on the board. I've divided them into seven main categories. Things like stock of knowledge, the business climate, taxes, infrastructure in the state, the size of the government sector. Obviously, you're worried about too large of a government sector squeezing out private sector growth. sector growth, demographic changes, and other factors. And our basic result was that we found that the two main factors accounting for economic growth, accounting for a significant portion of economic growth, are stock of knowledge variables. And those are variables such as the education of the citizens in a state, the amount of innovation that occurs in the state, the amount of research and development, federal research and development funds that flow to a state. Those are the single most important determinants of economic growth in an area, is simply the knowledge base that you have in the area. The second biggest explanatory variable are what we call demographic changes in the state. And in particular, as I'll focus on, that is the ability of regions and areas to attract new individuals into those states. We also found that another important characteristic is the percent of individuals that live in urban areas in a state. Urban areas tend to be more productive, pay higher wages, and states that have grown rapidly are ones that have converted from being a rural state to an urban state, something Kentucky hasn't managed to do very successfully. So, relative to our comparative, comparison states, Kentucky has experienced significantly slower growth in a number of these factors. This graph shows you patents per resident in a state. We use patents as our measure of innovation. It is a long-term, it is a measure that allows me to sort of think about innovative activities over an extended period of time. You can see back in 1969, the South has never been a particularly innovative place, and that was certainly true in the early 1970s. What's somewhat interesting is there have been significant increases in innovation in states such as Georgia, North Carolina, and even Tennessee. In contrast, Kentucky has languished in terms of our innovative activity. And I think you can trace a lot of the innovative activities in both Georgia and North Carolina, at places such as the University of North Carolina, Research Triangle Park, Georgia Tech, and the various technology centers that occur in Atlanta. When you look at the percent of residents in a state with a four-year college degree, again, and a very important determinant of economic growth, you see that Kentucky, while being very similar to places like Georgia, North Carolina, and Tennessee in 1969, and slightly above, Georgia, North Carolina, and Alabama in 1969, and slightly above Tennessee, at this point, we have the fewest residents with a four-year college degree amongst these states, and we're well below the national average. When you look at percentage of individuals living in an urban area, again, a similar pattern emerges. A number, Kentucky has traditionally been over 50% urban, but we stayed pretty flat, whereas states such as North Carolina and Georgia have significantly expanded their urban areas and increased the size of their urban areas, which has resulted in a significant increase in wealth for their population. As more and more people move into urban areas or urban areas grow to incorporate more of rural areas, individuals have become wealthier and more productive. Finally, one of the main factors that we discovered that accounts for economic growth in the state is the ability of the percent of people moving into a state. And you see Kentucky ranks very low. I should note that one of the things that we did also look at is the percentage of people leaving a state or a region. How important are people leaving in terms of slowing down economic growth? And how important are people coming into a state in terms of promoting economic growth? And the answer was quite clear. People leaving the state doesn't, leaving a region doesn't matter. What really determines economic growth is the ability of areas to attract new people, new businesses into a state. So, efforts to sort of hold on to citizens and try to keep people here generally are not very successful. Instead, what you want to devote economic development efforts to is to create amenities that attract people to a region. And I'm going to build on that a little bit in a second. We also, as part of this study, we went out and talked to site consultants, individuals whose business it is to find areas for businesses, new businesses to locate, and asked them what it is about Kentucky that makes it somewhat unattractive to businesses locating an area. And every site consultant we spoke to indicated the primary limitation to firms locating or expanding in Kentucky is simply the lack of training and poor education of the workforce. This is why we, the primary reason why we struggle to attract innovative businesses and workers to the state. Businesses don't believe that they can come here and find workers, and they believe that even if they get here and find workers, if they're successful and expand, they're not going to be able to recruit new workers. This is particularly acute in the rural areas of the state, but I think affects all of the areas of the state. Consultants mentioned a number of other factors, the perceived poor quality of life in Kentucky, by which they primarily mean the poor quality of schools, which is, again, particularly severe in the rural areas. Kentucky does a relatively poor job of marketing the state to outside, to individuals outside the state. Most people know that the Kentucky Derby is run in Kentucky, but couldn't tell you anything else about the state, other than perhaps that the University of Kentucky and the University of Louisville have basketball teams.[905.43][905.43][laughter] Since, yeah. They also talked about the lack of amenities in our big cities. Our big cities are not perceived as being places where young professionals choose to locate. And another reason is Kentucky seems to compete with each other in very detrimental fashions. While I recognize, after living here three years, but that, you know, northern Kentucky is different from central Kentucky, is different from eastern Kentucky, and God knows, that's a lot different than western Kentucky, most people from other places fail to capture the fact that these are fundamentally different places, and instead view it as one state and would like to think that we could work together, both as a state and for regions, to promote a regional economic development activities. We also spoke to economic development officials in other states about why they feel they were more successful, or particularly, what they felt was particularly important in promoting economic development in the state. And every economic development official indicated the importance of coordinating economic development efforts. Those are efforts such as workforce development, but there are also efforts such as tourism, and viewing tourism not as a way to get people to come here and take their money, but more viewing tourism as an effort to get people to come here and say, you know what, maybe Kentucky's not such a bad place. This is kind of a nice place. Maybe I want to move here and locate my business here. Georgia holds up the Olympics, not as something that made them a lot of money, but as something that introduced them to the world and sort of showed that Atlanta was, Atlanta and Georgia was a place where businesses could locate, could thrive and survive and do quite successfully. It's important for regions to work together, for areas, for cities to work with rural areas, for cities to work with state government, for states to coordinate with higher education institutions such as the major universities and the community colleges in the state when trying to attract businesses in the state. This is something in Kentucky we don't do particularly well. So, to conclude, all parts of the study point to the same conclusion. The primary limitation to economic growth in Kentucky is the low skill of workers in Kentucky, something I think we need to address on a number of different dimensions, not simply focusing on universities, but also focusing on community colleges and workforce development. And until we address this problem, all other efforts at economic development will fail. It's not hard to understand what the keys to economic growth in a state are if you've looked at the data. You have to have the necessary inputs for businesses to continue to grow if they locate in the state. And the key input that's necessary is workers, skilled workers. You have to have an environment where people want to move and raise a family. You have to have an environment that provides attractive amenities so that people are interested in moving to your location. If you provide attractive amenities, not only do people move here, but the people who are already here, the productive people who are already here, stay here. They don't relocate. And you want to ensure that people know about the positive attributes of the state, all of which I think Kentucky needs to work on. So that's my abbreviated presentation. And I have two minutes left.
Thank you very much, Dr. Trosky. Are there questions? Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Doctor, thank you for coming today. We appreciate that abbreviated presentation, but it did raise a couple of other questions. One, have you looked at Lexington and done the same type of analysis versus other cities?
No, I haven't looked at Lexington specifically. I actually have put together a proposal that I'm coordinating with, for the, with Cabinet for Economic Development, or hope to coordinate with the Cabinet for Economic Development, for the federal, to go to the federal government to look more at regional differences. That's one of the things that the federal government, the Commerce Department's interested in. So we're putting together a proposal, and I hope to. I mean, one of the questions, you're right, I think this raises a lot of questions. And one of the questions is, let's focus on regions and talk about how to do regional development. So we didn't specifically look at Lexington. But we did look basically a little bit at differences between the urban parts of the states and the rural parts of the state. Obviously, Lexington's a dominant urban area.
Right. With the states that had the big jumps there, did you look at causes why they had, like North Carolina spiked and?
Yeah, I mean, the causes of North Carolina and Georgia increasing their urban, you know, the percentage of people in an urban area, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, but is that due to industry, certain types of industries that helped draw that? Did you look at that?
Actually, one of the big, I mean, obviously, in both of those states, their urban areas became much more prominent and grew dramatically. And all you have to do is look at the Research Triangle Park area and know that the growth that occurred in Research Triangle Park, and is that grew out with the relocation? I mean, one of the things that I think is interesting is those, both North Carolina and Georgia, they're not striving to have top 20 public higher education institutions. They've had them for a number of years and through a long-term development. And in North Carolina in particular, UNC, NC State, and the Research Triangle Park has attracted pharmaceutical industries that then come and patent. So they attract innovative companies, and they pull people into that area. And certainly, Research Triangle Park has grown quite a bit. We did look at, again, areas that, in these states, areas that were rural that became urban. And that's one of the big drivers, is that in both North Carolina and Georgia, a lot of areas that were rural became urban as the urban areas expanded and grew. Incomes in those areas went up dramatically. We just don't see that in Kentucky. The number of people that live in these transitional counties, the counties that switch from being rural to urban, is much smaller in Kentucky than it is in these other states.
And I guess I'm just looking more to where we put our dollars in terms of what industry, in terms of developing their workforces. Which industries are key here, especially for our state, so we can increase?
You know, we did look at industries, and you know, you can't point to a specific industry, I don't think.
It's all over the board.
I think you, what I think our results primarily point to is that you create a place where innovative companies want to locate, where, and innovative in a lot of different areas, innovative in manufacturing, innovative in pharmaceuticals, innovative in services. You create an environment, you set up the amenities and the infrastructure that allows these companies to thrive and survive. They're going to come here. That's what they're looking for. So I don't know that I could point to a specific industry, because Georgia's different than North Carolina and have, and even areas of North Carolina and Georgia, some have done, focused on different industries. Alabama has tended to successfully focus on sort of high-end automotive manufacturing. We've got Toyota, but Alabama's got three or four of these. And so I can't point to a single industry. I think it's more just a general, just the infrastructure that's the important part.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming today, and your report's excellent. In listening to you talk about Atlanta and the Olympics, and that Atlanta and Georgia don't necessarily tout the fact that they had the Olympics, but that it was an opportunity to showcase their state and their city for economic development. Being that the 2010 Games are going to be here in just a couple of years, did you look at, or could you look at, some of the things that Atlanta did and Georgia did to promote themselves with respect to economic development?
I didn't. It would certainly be possible to look at some of the things that Georgia's promoted as part of the Olympics and try to understand some of the things that they did. I'm assuming, I know that there are some folks at Altech are doing a little bit of this. I don't know how much. I have spoken to them a bit about it. But yeah, it is certainly possible to look at some of the things that they did. I mean, I think it's more, you know, introduce them to the area and say, hey, you know, this is what Georgia looks like, this is what Georgie is, or, you know, in Kentucky. I mean, I don't think most people realize what central Kentucky looks like.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. Your comments about North Carolina are kind of interesting. You know, once upon a time, the furniture and textile industry was in northeast, and almost 180-degree pivot, they moved to North Carolina and gave North Carolina a very good boost as far as the economy was concerned, until somebody discovered China and Taiwan and a few of the other things, and they immediately exited. The problems in Kentucky as relates to the coal industry and tobacco, which primarily are found in the rural as opposed to the urban areas, and the fact that both of those at one time are either highly cyclical, especially the coal and the tobacco industry, as it has fallen upon hard times, as smokers and such have decreased. And people so dependent upon those, they hung their hats on both of those industries as their income producers and worried little about anything else, including education, because it didn't take necessarily education to perform in those industries. In your study, did you find any, anything that would support the replacement of those industries with something other than, I don't think we'll be able to get high-tech in those areas overnight anyway? And?
Well, I mean, I think, one thing I think is important to recognize in terms of, mining makes up less than 1% of miners, or individuals working in the mining industry make up less than 1% of the state's workforce. Individuals in agriculture make up less than 1% of the state's workforce. We are primarily a manufacturing state. We have been for a long period of time. Now, part of the, there are areas in Kentucky where that's not true, where there are larger presence. But even in, you know, the Ashland, eastern Kentucky region, at this point, mining, you know, if you define, if you use approximately an area development district, there's not an area development district where mining is more than 7% of the total workforce. So, mining's gone. I mean, or it certainly plays a much less significant role now than it did 20 years ago. Part of the problem is simply transition. You're right. A lot of people in, when you take somebody and send them down into the ground to dig coal out, we decide, and it likely, they increase the probability that they're going to die, and that's not a very good thing. So we've replaced them with capital, and then we tear off the tops of mountains to get at the coal. So, and that takes a lot, fewer workers and more capital. So part of the problem, I think, is one of the things that we did look at is those workers haven't transited, transitioned into doing something else. Why? Because there's a large amount of transfer payments that are going to those parts of the state. So they have no incentive to do anything else, and they don't have a lot of education. So, I think one of the things that this report points out quite dramatically is that our big problem in terms of economic development in this state is in the rural areas. I think, while I would like, while I think the urban areas could certainly be doing better, that they're doing pretty well. And the other thing I think is, in my research in this area, is nobody knows how to do economic development in rural areas. And again, back to this proposal that we have, that we hope to submit to the federal government, that's one of the points that we want to look at. Take this report and sort of say, hey, now we know where some of the biggest problems are. Let's try to understand how to address those issues. Because a lot of people try to do economic development in rural areas, but I don't think anybody knows what works. I'm pretty confident to say that nobody knows what works. They try a lot of various things, hoping that it succeeds. But no one has sat down and systematically understood what works, what doesn't work. And that is a big issue for us, how to, I mean, that's an issue 50 miles from here, 60 miles from here. You don't have to go far from Lexington to find those issues.
Well, geography gives us a leg up on being the shopping and medical center for almost totally all southern and eastern Kentucky.
And I think one of the things, I mean, in some sense, if you look at the growth industry, industries in the state, the health industry is a big growth industry in this state, where the highest percentage of adult smokers, highest percentage of obese individuals, highest percentage of diabetes. That gives you a big market if you're into the hospital industry. And, I mean, all you got to do is look at UK. That's where the growth in UK is coming.
That's great news, isn't it?
Yeah, well, you know, I guess you got to, when your budget gets cut and Medicaid budget gets increased, and 70% of the Medicaid dollars goes to that hospital down the street, that kind of lessens it a little, but it's not a great thing.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Councilmember Blevins.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. This has been great. I'm drawing, I want to draw two things together, your presentation with one we had a few weeks ago from Mr. Brad Cowgill, in his role at the Council on Post-Secondary Education. He was talking about various things, but you have some various statistics today. I want to compare ourselves to North Carolina. You've mentioned Research Triangle Park quite a bit. We've been trying to foster the same thing here, obviously, with Coldstream Park. Coldstream is a lot smaller, but it's a great initial start. Also, I wanted to point out that Lexington is above the national average in four-year degrees per capita, or per whatever it is.
Lexington is.
So let's compare it to North Carolina's and Research Triangle Park. Research Triangle Park has the most PhDs per square mile on the planet. And Research Triangle Park, I'll poll the council, would you like to guess when Research Triangle Park was created by North Carolina? 1952. So we're a little bit behind. We've got lead time to go. So put all that in the context of five straight years of double-digit tuition increases at our state universities, and we're not going to get anywhere. So I thank you for your stats. I just want to take that opportunity to plug my personal thing, which is, we can't keep putting this on the backs of our students. We'll never get anywhere. keep putting this on the backs of our students. We'll never get anywhere.
I mean, I think one of the things, when you look at North Carolina, they've made a consistent, long-term investment in higher education since, for 50 years. And they, and Research Triangle Park really paid off for them in the 90s. They just rocketed in the 90s. And that was a return on an investment that they've made over an extended period of time. And I must admit that you get a little frustrated. You don't, that investment doesn't always occur, or hasn't occurred as consistently, if you look at the money spent on higher education in Kentucky. And, yeah, Brad's seen the presentation too, and maybe my biggest booster in state government, so.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I enjoyed your presentation, Professor Trosky.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. We seem to be hanging out a lot together lately.
Yeah. Not as much as at one time we wished.
Yeah, well, that's okay.
But the analysis, was that based primarily on manufacturing?
No, the analysis that I did was based on all industries in a state.
So that included the medical sector and the education sector?
Oh, it includes all of that, yeah. So we use data on individuals, and regardless of where, and incomes that individuals derive from any industry. So we included information on the health services, industry, retail trade. You mentioned it.
Those are the people that work, the leaders down the street at the place you were mentioning that gets the Medicaid dollars, tell me that they've had very good luck recruiting people from the coast, east and west, and places like that. And once they get them here and show them the place, and give them the opportunity, tell them what opportunities they are, they like it here.
I think, you know, and I think they have, they have been very successful. I think they are getting resources to enable them to do that. They're the rapid, most rapidly growing part of the university. And I think you can see that, yeah, that has a benefit. And again, there's a lot of opportunities here for people in the medical profession.
Yes, and Chamber of Commerce keeps telling us about, or the Commerce Lexington, rather, keeps telling us about all the rankings that go around. You know, we rank eighth as the best place to do this, or 12th to do that, or fifth to do this. So in Lexington, we seem to be doing okay. But what can we in Lexington do to help the rest of the state?
Well, I mean, I think it is, it is clear that in Lexington, I think we're doing fairly well. I think Louisville's doing okay. I think northern Kentucky's doing okay. I mean, if you look at, if you look at Cincinnati, you look at Ohio, I mean, I think that, and I have looked at the data, I think the vibrant part of the Cincinnati metropolitan statistical area is the Kentucky part. It's not the Ohio part. And that's where a large amount of growth is doing. And so, I mean, there are parts of our state that are doing well. I don't, you know, I don't want to be too negative. Bowling Green's doing great. You know, Elizabeth Town's doing well. Paducah seems to be, and Henderson, Henderson, Kentucky? You got to help me. I've only been here three years, so sometimes I forget some places. And, yeah, don't quiz me on the counties either. I haven't memorized them all. So there are certainly parts. Well, how can we help the rest of the state? I mean, one of the things I think we really don't, we really need to understand is how to sort of link economic growth in the urban areas with the rural areas. How do we include the rural areas in the success that we're having in these urban areas? And I think that that's an important question. I'm not sure I have the answer at this point. It's one of the things that I think this study raised, is that we're not doing a very good job of including our rural areas in the success that we're having in the urban areas. But, you know, and I think this, as I indicated, that this, I wrote this report for the Cabinet for Economic Development, and it's, I think it's having an influence on their strategic plans. And I think part of their key strategic plan, part of their strategic plan is to start focusing more on rural areas. One of the things I think we need to do is focus more on regional economic development. And I think you need to focus on economic growth in a region centered around a city, or set of cities. I mean, London, Somerset, Corbin, that should be a place where those folks are all working together and understanding that, you know, if something helps one part of them, then it's going to help the other part. But I mean, we can be doing the same thing here. We should be focusing on regional growth, not simply growth of Lexington, but growth of the entire Bluegrass region, and how that could help some of the more rural parts of the region.
A little trivia, that Corbin's the only town in the state, I think, that's in three counties.
Yes, I recommend, and that doesn't help Corbin at all, yeah. And I know why Corbin is famous. I sort of know that. Like Fried Chicken started there. Learned that as well.
Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. A couple of things you mentioned that are near and dear to my heart, and that is, talk a little bit about what you see as some of the amenities that the urban areas need to have to be attractive for this type of workforce and so forth. Because that's really what we're all about, is city building, and that's where that comes into play.
I mean, you know, obviously, one thing I think sometimes people forget are business, is that businesses are nothing but a collection of individuals who have families. And you want to make your place attractive to families, to people who want to locate here, settle here. So, I mean, obviously, the number one thing, you know, is anybody, I moved here three years ago. What does anybody look at when they move to a new region? They look at the schools. Am I going to be able to find a quality education for my kids? And so that's a key issue. I mean, there's no question about that. We do okay here in Lexington. And I think that that's, but that's something, you know, do we want to be doing okay? You know, one, my wife comes from Connecticut, the state with the best education system in the country. Why don't we have a Connecticut-style education system? You know, I don't, you know, people say, well, we're poorer than Connecticut. But, you know, I'm not sure that, yeah, that's why we're poor. And obviously, higher education is an important, is an important amenity. But, I mean, other things about, you know, things that are attractive, I mean, we do have some very attractive amenities as well to businesses. We obviously have good infrastructure. We're centrally located. We've got two major interstates. Obviously, that's why Toyota located here. That's what they look at. We've got a nice airport. So I think there are things we have going for us. You know, people talk about attracting the young professionals. And I mean, that's one of the things that Atlanta is focused on, is attracting young black professionals, and setting up a nightlife that, you know, and the restaurants, and that sort of scene that they focus on. You know, those are always issues that I think can be, you can examine. That would help, you know, keep people, keep people here who are young and educated.
You know, you had mentioned something else that I think is really important to camp out on for just a second, is we don't do a very good job of telling our own story. And we don't tell what's really here. And it certainly doesn't help when certain publications that go out, you know, tend to bash all the good things that are going on, and squelch that for whatever reason. So I think that we have to make a concerted effort to do that. And as you go forward in your research, you know, I would just encourage you to continue to put that in there, that we, we as cities really need some help in understanding, that we need to camp out on some of the good things in, for our regions as well as for our cities.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, obviously, you know, people need to recognize that Lexington's just a beautiful place to live. And until you're here, you don't, you don't know that. And I think, and the state as a whole doesn't do a very good job. And regions don't do a job cooperating, you know, back to Corbin being in three counties. I mean, those three counties don't talk to each other. And so it's hard to understand, you know, we clearly need to sort of take regional, regional economic development and recognize that, you know, when they locate a plant, you know, somebody locates a business in Scott County, we benefit from it in Fayette County.
I think, to that point, nice, very nice segue to my next point. The regional economics, I think that we are starting to get it around here. But I think, Mayor Newberry, you said it very well one day when we were together. You said it's very tough to do regional economic revenue sharing when jails are paramount in most counties. They don't have enough money to fund their jails. And it's hard to talk about some of these more grand lofty things when, when some of the tax structure just doesn't allow them to build basic things. Can you speak just a little bit to how we're set up tax-wise, and how that might be hurting us or helping us, as it relates to some of this stuff?
Well, I think both Councilmembers Stevens and Lane have heard this just a few days ago, since I'm talking to ad hoc committee that they're on. I mean, taxes, Kentucky is just, I look at our tax structure and am sort of flabbergasted about our tax structure. We rely much more on occupation taxes than any other municipality, than any other state I've ever seen. And those aren't good, those are very variable taxes. And we don't rely very much on very steady taxes. That's called property taxes. We, most of our taxes are, we have no ability to levy our own taxes. Now, I'm not a big fan of taxes, don't get me wrong. I'm a graduate of the University of Chicago. I believe in a limited government. But I also believe in, you know, that cities should be able to compete for, one of the ways we, you do economic development is you compete. I'm going to offer amenities, and the ways you offer amenities is by having your own taxes that you get to keep here, instead of sending them to Frankfurt. When you send them to Frankfurt, everybody gets to do the same thing. And I have no idea why we continue to do that. We need the ability in Lexington to be able to compete with, you know, provide amenities that they're not providing in places like Columbus, or even down in Knoxville, or Chapel Hill. And to do that, why we can't, if we want to tax ourselves to death, what do people in Frankfurt care? That's our business. And so we have a very centralized government that doesn't help, you know, that directs one-size-fits-all solutions to various areas of the state, thinking that it costs the same to live in Lexington as it does in Pikeville and Paducah, and that we need the same amenities that they do. And we need, you know, when the legislature says, you know, we're not going to fund teacher raises, why don't we get to fund them in Lexington if that's what we want to choose to do? And so I think we're hurt by the types of taxes we have, relying on, not relying on sales tax, not relying on property tax, instead relying on fees and occupation taxes, which are some very variable taxes.
And I would, I thank you very much for saying that, because, you know, that's what so many folks don't realize inside and outside of government, is how you're set up. It does not allow you to build the amenities for the type of attractiveness that you want, to bring people, to bring the workforce, and educate them, and continue to kind of grow your own. And so as you move forward with your report, I would ask you as a favor to us and to others, that if you could very intentionally continue to point that flaw out, that we are very tax-centric, that we don't have a system set up to win, and it's very difficult to do some of the things that we really need to do and can do, actually, fairly quickly, if we were given some abilities to do that.
I'm happy to send you the presentation that I prepared for this ad hoc committee the other day, and it sort of lays out sort of how our taxes look to other peoples.
That'd be great.
And so.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lane.
Yeah, I have just one question. Several councilmembers have asked what your web address is for, if they want to pull us off of your website.
Good question. I can't remember. I don't, you know, let's see, I got it bookmarked. I think it's www, oh, I don't know, if you type, if you go to the, if you type Kentrosky, you'll find me. I am, you type Kentrosky, I will be the first thing that comes up on Google. My cousins aren't happy about that, but that's okay. So, but if you'd like, I can also send, you tell me where to send my web address, and I'll send it, I'll send it to you, and you can distribute it to the rest of them. I apologize. I should have that. I just.
And I don't have any more questions. I think my other councilmembers have asked everything I was going to ask. I would like, again, to thank you for coming today, and I believe there's a couple more questions.
Appreciate the invitation.
Councilmember Beard.
One addition, because we got off on this tax situation. I just wanted to make a comment. Are you familiar with a study that was done by Dr. Paul Coombs in Louisville concerning our taxing structure, structure in Kentucky, and who are the winners, and who are the losers, and why are they winners, and why are they losers, and we are the losers?
I have worked closely with Paul since I've been here. I consider Paul a pretty good friend, and he actually got me Louisville basketball tickets one time. And I know Paul's opinions about that, but I haven't actually seen his report. So, but I know, and I think he's right. I mean, we're transferring a lot of resources. We're taxing ourselves, and it flows to the rural areas. And it's not hard to understand why, given the political structure of the state. So I guess.
Either to Washington or to Frankfurt, one of the two places.
Yes, yes. That's right. That all the money goes there, and then they...
A deficit in Fayette County of, at least four years ago, about $286 billion.
Yeah, that would not surprise me at all, particularly given the structure of where, I mean, you look at, it's somewhat interesting, too. I mean, part of this has to do with the role that they play in K through 12. But our state government relies much more on property taxes than any other state government in this country, which is hard to understand why the state should be relying on property taxes. That should be something that local government should rely more on.
I'll see if I can't get you a copy of that.
I'll ask Paul for one. He'll be more than happy. I talked to Paul.
I'm sure he would.
We've worked on a number of projects.
It makes very interesting reading, actually.
Yep.
As those things go. Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Trosky? I just have one. Why would you want Paul Coombs to get you UofL basketball tickets?
My wife's a graduate.
Just teasing.
My wife's a graduate of the University of Connecticut, and I wanted to watch UConn beat Louisville. They did, I might add. And I had great seats.
I'm a fan of the coach and the team, and appreciate very much you're coming here.
It was an enjoyable experience. I've gotten basketball tickets to UK as well, more than just UofL.
Well, thanks very much for coming and sharing your insights with us today.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. That takes us down to council reports now. Councilmember Stenit.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, this Thursday at 4:00 p.m., we'll be continuing the General Government Council link. We weren't able to finish last Thursday and Friday, so we'll be continuing our discussions for the General Government Council link at 4:00 p.m. up on the Fifth Floor Conference Room. For those councilmembers who would like to come by and give us an ear. Also, Mayor, over the weekend, several of us received in our mailboxes a mailing from Department of Solid Waste, I believe it is. And there were some dates in here that have long since passed, and we want to make sure that the public is aware that they can still get mulch and other things that are mentioned on our dates, because the dates were the 12th and 19th. Well, they didn't, our public didn't receive this until the 19th. So if we could have someone put it up on our website, that they can still get these items that were talked about in our newsletter that went to everyone's homes, that would be very helpful if we can get that done.
Commissioner Taylor, could you follow up with the folks in waste management about that for us, please? Thank you.
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Gray.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of announcements. One is just a kind of a reminder that the Committee of the Whole will begin meetings on the budget. First meeting will be next Tuesday. It's a scheduled budget and finance meeting. And I think everybody's gotten the, is that right, Dr. Stevens? Everybody should have gotten the schedule.
They've been distributed. Probably wouldn't hurt to distribute it again, because sometimes papers like that get lost.
There's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we've got 10 or so meetings that are emerging soon. First one, next Tuesday, is the Council Budget Analyst Presentation Regarding the Mayor's Proposed Budget. That's Tuesday at 1:00 in the council chambers. And just as a suggestion, it might be a good, appropriate time for the Links chairs to kind of give us an update on where they are. That's not coming, I guess, on the official schedule until meeting number six on Tuesday, May 20. But my sense would be if we can get, you know, just kind of an update on where the Links are as of today. Would that work? Is there any problem with that? Links chairs? Just an update? Next Tuesday?
Mr. Vice Mayor, we'll be completed with our work by then.
So you can have an update, right?
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Okay. The other report, kind of segues from Dr. Trosky's presentation. At the motion earlier in the year from Councilmember Stenit, and second by Councilmember McCord, to create an economic development task force principally be made up of the council members, with some input from Councilmember Stenit, and with input from Councilmember Stenit and McCord, we've put together a tentative agenda. I'll be distributing that. The first meeting will be on May the 22nd. But let me get that out to everybody. It'll be at 5:00. I know it's a tough time, but considering that we've got lots of meetings already on Tuesdays, this looks like the best time. I can see Councilmember Crosby already. She's just smiling. We'll be sending out this, but the first one would be, right now, would be scheduled for May 22 at 5. And the, the first two, okay, again, this is tentative, subject to, subject to any strong objections. But the idea would be that we would have a couple of presentations at each of our four or five meetings. And Bill Lear has been recommended, he's created a, an economic summary or economic presentation that the chamber has used and others have used. And I think Mr. Lear has updated it, and it was suggested by Councilmember Stenit that Bill make that presentation to our first meeting. It's kind of a comprehensive analysis of Lexington, sorts by demographics, by jobs, sort of a good overview. And also, at the same meeting, we've invited Ron Crouch, who is formerly the state of Kentucky's demographer. He was in that role for, almost forever, it seems like. He was in that role for almost forever, it seems like. Now Ron is head of the University of Louisville's Center for Demographics and has a pretty good presentation. I may be wrong on exactly the center, but it has something to do with demographics. Is that right, Joe? Some, yeah, right. Okay, so I will be getting out to everybody the tentative agenda, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're more than welcome. Councilmember DeCamp.
Thanks, Mayor. I was really disappointed to read in the paper about the parking lot, which is next to the farmer's market on Vine Street, having to charge the people that are coming down there on Saturday. We've, those of us who go on Saturday morning to our, every Saturday morning festival in downtown have been able to park through the generosity of the owner of that lot and been able to walk right. It's been very convenient. And I think a lot of people were surprised, disappointed, that I think it was $3 a head, I'm not sure. I think that's what I read in the paper. And I would hope that the adminis, somebody from the administration can contact the owner and see if we can't do a little arm twisting, because it is going to get, I mean, it's, it's going to get more popular as, as the weather gets warmer, and it's been an awfully nice amenity for our downtown. And I would hope that we can maybe convince the owner that we can offer a few hours of free parking to the patrons of our well-known and well-used farmer's market on Saturday. So I would implore you to try to see if we can't convince them that this would be a very civic thing to do for our community.
Mr. Kelly, would you touch base with Harold Tate about that at the DDA and ask him to inquire about the status of that situation for us? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two motions. One is the approval of the NDF requests.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beard and a second by Councilmember Blevins to approve the NDF. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
And now I would like to move to place the resolution earlier mentioned, the resolution on the docket of Thursday, April 24th, 2008, authorizing the execution of a lease agreement with the Board of Education of Fayette County, Kentucky for Meadowbrook Golf Course for a period ending November 15th, 2008, at a cost of $1.
I have a motion by Councilmember Beard and a second by Councilmember Myers to add the Meadowbrook lease to the docket for the next council meeting. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Blues.
Thank you, Mayor. Several announcements. At 6:30 tonight, there's a very important public meeting at the Green Acres, Green Acres Neighborhood Park Shelter. This is the, this is a public meeting on the Green Acres Stormwater Project. It's important for residents of Green Acres Hollow Creek Neighborhood to be there to, to get an update on the, on the ongoing project and, and to speak up on stormwater problems. So we hope to see, we hope to see a good turnout and a productive meeting. Tomorrow night, the second quarterly meeting of the Second District Neighborhood Association Presidents will convene at the Marlboro Park Shelter. That's at 6:30 PM Wednesday, April 23. Hope to see a good turnout there. We'll have a, have a presentation from, from our stormwater engineer, David Gabbard, on, on rain gardens and, and other information. I think this will be a useful and productive meeting. Coming up next Monday evening, Monday, April 26th, there are three neighborhood association meetings. At 7:00 PM, the Oakwood Neighborhood Association will meet in the Oakwood Community Center, and at the same time, the Radcliffe Marlboro Neighborhood Association will meet in the Marlboro Park Shelter. At 6:30 that evening, Lynburn Neighborhood Association will meet in the Martin Luther King Park Shelter. Then on Wednesday, April 28th, the Noise Ordinance Task Force will hold a public hearing that will be here in, in council chambers at 6:00 PM. A public is invited to, to come and make as much noise as you can about the noise problems that, that we're facing and which the, the task force is, is addressing. Each member of the public who wishes to speak will have three minutes to make his or her presentation. We will not take up barking dog issues, but all other noises are fair game, and hope to see you next week, 6:00 PM right here in chambers. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I had three things I wanted to mention to the council. The chairs of the five Links met today for an informal session to discuss their progress. I'm happy to say that I think they're doing a better job this year than a year that I've been exposed to their activities, so they should be able to give you an update without any problems, one that you mentioned, Vice Mayor. Secondly, it was nice to get a tree award today. The Carter's Committee's been involved in some of these, too, but on April 28th, when the Tree Board had its meeting out at the Holiday Inn, I went out for part of the meeting, but when they adjourned in the middle of the afternoon, that was on a Saturday, as our forester was leaving the parking lot there, he noticed that there were some vandals organized taking down the trees in front of Denny's Restaurant. And they chopped down all the trees that were in the public right-of-way that belongs to the state, the Commonwealth. So that, he is able to interview the foreman of the crew who had been hired by Denny's to do this. We've initiated a discussion with District Seven of the Transportation Cabinet and Highway Department to see if they can take appropriate action related to that act. I'm told in the past, sometimes the state has been able to prosecute those who take down the trees without a permit and make them replace them, maybe not with the same size, but mature trees. And I would think we would want to do that for any trees that get cut down in Lexington. We have those incidences happening sometimes. There's trees that were planted by Lael Ayton out on Broadway in front of a large, what turned, they grew up in front of a billboard. And Mr. Ayton noticed when he was going home one day that the trees were no longer there. They were just stumps. Somebody had come in the middle of the night and taken them down. So that happens periodically, and we'll keep our eyes open. So if you see any trees that have been removed, you have to have a permit to do so, particularly in the right-of-way, so let us know. Third, the Bluegrass Council of the Boy Scouts will have their annual governor's luncheon this Friday at noon at the Hyatt Regency. Governor Stephen Burcher plans to be there and to address our audience. And all, as you know, the council did have an NDF pass-around, which provides you a ticket to that event, so if you could go at noon, you would be more than welcome. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that in light of the, the report that we just heard on economic development in Kentucky, if our economic development task force would take a look at some of the things that Atlanta and Georgia were able to do to attract new businesses to town while they had the Olympics there, what we can do to use this opportunity, the 2010 Games, to do the same thing. But I also think that we can focus on the World Trade Center and look at those folks that are coming over here from abroad to see what businesses we have here that might take the opportunity of those companies being over here, those executives and things being over here, to see what they can do abroad when they go back home. So if we could put that on the agenda, maybe for one of the economic development task force meetings, I think that would be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Does any other councilmember wish to make a report? All right, we'll move on to the Mayor's report. There's several recommendations for appointments that are contained in your packet. A motion would be in order to approve those. Have a motion by Councilmember Beard and a second by Councilmember Myers. Any discussion? Those in favor of approving those recommendations, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I only want to add one other thing, and that is, last week, one of our members, Councilmember David Stevens, was recognized by the American Red Cross as one of their heroes, and that is an award that is richly deserved, and I'm, congratulations for being the hero of the American Red Cross.
Well, thank you very much. It was an honor that I didn't anticipate.
That concludes the Mayor's report. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on matters not on the agenda today? Mr. Cobb, if you'll step to the podium, you'll have three minutes. We'll need your name and address, please.
My name is Lewis Cobb. I live at 367 North Martin Luther King, Number Three. Peace and love to the council. Thank you for your patience, Mayor. I want to take my time to speak to the African-American community in Lexington. We've got to find a way to stop killing each other. We got to find a way to come together and start businesses. We got to find a way to love everybody. We need to pray. When I came in today, I seen the Urban League Director, I seen a lot of other African-American communities leaders. I was grateful to see their presence. I fell on my knees because I feared the most high. I don't fear no man. When I got up off my knees, they was gone. So if I got to stand by myself, I'm going to tell the Urban County Government, I'm going to tell the African-American community, we're going to have to respect each other. We got to respect me, we got to respect everybody. Are we all going down? We got to learn to live together as brothers. Are we all going perish together as fools? We need a new black leadership down in this town, not to disrespect y'all, but that y'all can respect us, know that we different, we shine, we make money, we save the community. I'm so saddened at the loss of life that's happening right around me. A young lady, Ms. Brun, got hit by a car. If I was out there, she wouldn't have got hit, you better believe that. We need shiners on the streets downtown Lexington. A young brother got cut down. If I had the opportunity to place him, bring him down, he would have been a shining, he wouldn't have lost his life. We need help. We need a change. We need to help everybody, the homeless. Thank you, Mayor. I love you, Mayor. Every time I see y'all, I want to shine your shoes. It starts with you, babe.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
No movement.
I have a motion by Councilmember DeCamp and a second by Councilmember Beard. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.[1791.52]